If I could call the meeting to order. Can we stand and pledge the flag, please?
The United States of America, in the name of our fathers, who worship him, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming. This is our very brief reorganization meeting, and I'm going to let our solicitor, Mark Davis, briefly describe what we're going to do.
We are required, as every other school district in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, to reorganize the first week in December, which we're going to do tonight. This year is even a little simpler than some years because it's not an election year. So we have no new board members to seat. We don't have a secretary election this year. So really, all we have to do by law is reorganize, which means we will elect board officers. Diane, as our sitting secretary, has called the meeting to order. She will then ask for nominations for board president pro tem, which is a temporary board president. We'll elect the temporary board president first, then that person will be seated. They'll run the reorganization meeting for the benefit or the purpose of electing a president. Then thereafter, whoever's elected president will hold the election for the vice president. The agenda indicates, and although I say this every year in many places, and it's not the end of the world if you don't, the nominations do not require a second. With that, Diane, the floor is yours.
Okay, well, I'll open the floor for nominations for temporary president.
I'd like to nominate Justin Valentine for president, temporary president.
Any other nominations? All those in favor for Justin as our temporary president?
Aye.
Hopefully not too temporary. That was a joke. We need to make nominations for president of the school board for the next year.
I'll make a nomination for Justin Valentine for president.
Are there any other nominations?
Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and nominate Rick.
Nomination for Mr. Rabinowitz. And are there any others? No. Here are none. We're going to close the nominations.
You can do it either way. What I would do for clarity is, this is not required to be a roll call vote, but for clarity, I would just have, who's ever acting, and I know Dave's not here tonight, he usually calls the roll, who's ever going to do that, call the roll and state the name of the person you're voting for.
I'll call the roll for Dave. Mrs. Gallion.
Mr. Valentine.
Mr. Kofelt.
Mr. Valentine.
Mrs. Grimm.
Mr. Valentine.
Mr. Alexander.
Mr. Rabinowitz.
Mr. Valentine.
Mr. Faulkner.
Mr. Valentine.
Mr. Rabinowitz.
Uh, me.
Mrs. Cherico.
Mr. Valentine.
And Mr. Rossi.
Mr. Bass.
There's six, six votes for Mr. Valentine and three votes for Mr. Rabinowitz.
Thank you. With that, we'd like to open the nominations for vice president for the ensuing school year.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Faulkner.
I nominate Mr. Alexander.
Are there any other nominations? Make the motion that we close nominations, and we will also have another roll call vote.
Mrs. Gallion.
Mr. Faulkner.
Mr. Kofelt.
Mr. Faulkner.
Mrs. Grimm.
Mr. Alexander.
Mr. Alexander.
Me, myself.
Mr. Valentine.
Mr. Faulkner.
Mr. Rabinowitz, oops, Mr., wait, I'm sorry, I skipped Mr., Mr. Faulkner.
Myself.
Sorry. Mr. Rabinowitz.
Mr. Alexander.
Mrs. Cherico.
Mr. Faulkner.
Mr. Rossi.
Mr. Alexander.
I believe there's five votes for Mr. Faulkner and four votes for Mr. Alexander.
Moving on, we have some representatives that we need to replace tonight as well. One of the things that we instituted last reorganization meeting was our committees, something that was up for discussion. Just for tonight, I'm going to ask that we just leave our committees intact until we have further discussion on what we want to do in the future, reorganizing our committees. Mrs. Grimm's seat on the Career and Techno, the Western Montgomery Career and Technology Center expires, and I would like to renominate her for that position. She's done a great job for Potts Grove. Are there any other nominations for the Western Center? No? All those in favor of Mrs. Grimm for the Western Center?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? She'll be joined by Mr. Kofelt, whose term expires next December, and Mr. Alexander, who's done a great job for us as well. In 1216, his term expires. I've been the legislative liaison for the MCIU board. We don't need to reorganize these tonight. If anyone has a burning desire to go down to these meetings down in Norristown, just let me know. And Mr. Faulkner's been the recreation board representative for the school board.
Mr. Valentine, if anyone is interested in the Board to turn around.
Okay. Which Dave, as Mr. Faulkner's indicated, that if someone else has an interest in doing that, which we can talk about that after the meeting tonight and see if we can reappoint if someone else is interested. Unfortunately, not yet. Yeah, not yet. Yeah, yeah, not yet.
They had their elections, and I apologize, I can't remember, but the IU comes up during the Irish school year somewhere, but it's not a reorg issue at this point.
Yeah, and they had a vote, sort of, after everybody was picked, you know, but it was somewhat a fait accompli because the people had already been picked by their respective school boards. So, and I'm perfectly fine with staying on there, I was just curious if there was an expiration, so, okay.
Going through all the nominations, I make a motion that we adjourn our reorganization meeting for the upcoming school year. Make the motion a second. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We're going to take a brief, the board needs to have an executive session for a few minutes. We're going to, we have some honorees that we want to recognize tonight. We don't want to hold anyone hostage, so we'll do those before we adjourn. Okay?
Before we recess.
Before we recess. Right. Before we recess.
Okay, well, then, moving right along, I am, have the honor this evening of recognizing a very special guest, Mr. Forrest Ginder. Mr. Ginder is with us this evening. He's a lifelong Potts Grove resident. He grew up in West Potts Grove, and he settled in his adult life in the Sanatoga community. He worked for Firestone in Pottstown. Being a person of high civic ideals, who believed in the importance of education, Mr. Ginder was moved to action on the establishment of the Potts Grove School District in a time when Pottstown School District was responsible for educating the students from the Potts Groves. The feeling, then, was that opportunities and services were not as readily available to the students that were living on the outskirts of the Pottstown School District. It's my understanding that Mr. Ginder maintains many articles of the work involved in the establishment of the Potts Grove School District and in his years on the school board. And copies of these documents are being prepared and will be kept here in the district for those interested in seeing them. Mr. Ginder retired from the Potts Grove School Board in 1969 after 17 years of service. Those 17 years of service included time as a board secretary, vice president, and president. As a founding member of the Potts Grove School District in the mid-1950s, he also served as chairman of the Potts Grove High School Building Committee, a project that cost just over $2 million in 1955. Mr. Ginder, now aged 99, resides in the Chestnut Knoll Assisted Living Community in Boyertown, and we are very pleased to introduce you to our board and reintroduce you to the Potts Grove community as a founding father of the Potts Grove School District. Mr. Forrest Ginder, we thank you for your service. Thank you for joining us. And at this time, I'm going to ask that Mr. Gary Durenzo come forward and help us honor the boys' cross-country team for their wonderful progress this season.
Mr. Ginder, first of all, I'd like to say thank you. I'm a lifelong resident, I'm only half your age, but I spent my entire life here, and thank you for giving us an education that we can be proud of. Thank you very much. First of all, I'd like to thank the board of school directors for your constant support of all of our programs, athletics, academics, band, music, et cetera. And again, once again, we're here celebrating another championship with this team. This team is a very unique group because if you know anything about individual sports, cross-country, wrestling, it takes a special individual to be able to exceed. And it also takes very dedicated, knowledgeable coaches to be able to mold a group of individuals that oftentimes have individual agendas into a collective team. And Mr. Rektin and Mrs. Eaton do a fabulous job, both in our cross-country programs and our track programs, they do an excellent job. Mr. Rektin and I were speaking the other day about how education mirrors, or athletics mirrors education, and I know the board knows how much I appreciate the support that athletics gets, but they really are one and the same. We talked about when Larry starts coaching and Marilyn start coaching a sport, they start with the end in mind, which is very synonymous with the academic, the academic world. And I'm a proponent that athletics enhances academics. And I know we had a Dr. Ginsberg here that talked about resiliency to our district, and these gentlemen had to come back from some, and be resilient after our first home meet. And I'm not sure we've been beaten on our home course in the last three years, but our first home meet this year, these guys took a pretty, pretty good beating from another very talented team. And what we saw, what our school district saw, and what you guys experienced, was the ability to rebound, be resilient, and come back and claim two championships. The Pioneer Athletic Championship, which is our league championship, and again, for a school our size, very impressive. And then they went on to, to win the PIAA District Championship at Lehigh University. And again, this is a group that's, some of these guys have been with this program three, four years. This is the third year that we finished in the top six teams in the state of Pennsylvania. So, again, an outstanding accomplishment, and if we could have you guys come on up and hand you some trophies and some certificates. Ladies and gentlemen, the boys' cross-country team. We're going to hand out some certificates for you guys. You going to just come forward? Austin Eaton. Derek Lopez. Joey Drager. Kyle Leaf Underwood. Brendan Wertz. Michael Neeson. You can clap. Mike Pryor. Noah Nadolsky. They all must be studying. Brian Collins. Matt Harp. Ryan Levingood. Cameron Cagle. Zach Riker. Dustin Schreiber. Logan Vandaway. And our two coaches, Mrs. Marilyn Eaton. And Mr. Larry Rektin, who I've asked to say a few words.
Okay, I just have a few things to say, and what Gary said, I think is very true. This is a team that's very, very special, and I think represent Potts Grove very well this year. Our team had, as he said, a phenomenal record and a great season. It was a team that really bounced back and did overcome some early-season adversity, and their final accomplishments over the last three weeks illustrate that. But one thing that Mr. Durenzo did mention, kind of alluded to, is the fact that athletics and academics go hand in hand. One of the things I want to, want you guys to know about this team, at the end of the year, we pick a top scholastic or the top academic student for their team, and when I went through this team's records, it was very, very difficult to do when I looked at their academic records. And I did just some quick math. This team, as a group, if I just took their majors, had a 93% average as a group and as a team, which is absolutely amazing. And that would be even higher if I included their electives, that was just taking their majors. So this group truly represents what a student athlete is, and they enhance their academics with their athletics, and student does come first with these guys. Another thing about this team, and with the shirts that they have on, is they, our motto for this year is that we run as one. We run as a group, we're committed to each other, not one athletic, athlete, but everyone. And I think that also fits in with this community. Coach Eaton and I work hard at training these, these young men in the area of athletics, but it's this community, it's, it's Potts Grove that makes them the young men that they are and the young men that you can be proud of. Just a, a quick example is every year we put on a Thanksgiving Day race, which is where we, we raise quite a bit of money that we, we use for some extras for the team, but we also give a percentage of that to the Pottstown area Alliance Meals for the Homeless. In the last couple of years, I believe we've given about $2,000, $3,000 to them to help feed the homeless in the community through some of the churches. And I think that's a very important message that we have for them also. I'm very proud of this team, and I've asked each of our athletes, because we are one, and we are one community. They have T-shirts for all of the board members for, in recognition of the season. By the way, the T-shirts does come out of tax money, this comes out of, out of our race proceeds. So if, guys, if you would do that and give those to the board members, and that's our gift, thank you for the support of Potts Grove Cross Country and for all athletics.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Rektin. Thank you to the parents for hanging out with us tonight, bringing the kids out. Students, not kids, they're almost adults. I'm going to call the rest of our meeting for tonight to order. Roll call, we're going to note that all board members are present tonight. With that, we'll entertain a motion of the minutes from the last meeting.
Second.
Motion a second. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Abstain, I wasn't here. And with that, we're going to move on to our education report.
Thank you, Mr. Valentine. And this evening, Dr. Ziegler's here, and he's going to be speaking to you about our AP courses, and this, this was one strategy that we, that Dr. Ziegler has with the high school administration in their high school, school improvement plan.
Good evening, board. Tonight, the SIP with our school improvement plan, one of the key components of that, and our goal, is the Advanced Placement Courses. Advanced Placement Courses allows a student to take a course, and then at the end of the course, they can take a test, an exam. Where if they pass, they can actually get college credit for that. So I'm going to walk you through our goal tonight. Michael, we're locked up here, can you help me out? Oh, no, we are locked up. Do you mind just being the clicker? The, I'll walk you through our courses that we have. In math, we have, currently, we have three courses. We have AP Calculus AV, and then we have AP Calculus BC, and then we have AP Statistics. And with that, those are three courses out of four that they offer. You can see our science offerings right there, we have physics, biology, we just, we just added last year, physics, biology, environmental science, and we, we've had chemistry for quite some time now. In the social studies, we have European history and US history, English, we have two, literature and language composition, and then we do an art 2D and 3D portfolio, and then finally, we have Spanish this year. We are looking at adding computer science next year. What I want to show you here is, this is the percentage of students at Potts Grove that scored a three or higher, that's, that's passing on the AP exam. The, this 73 right here is, is Potts Grove, the green 69 is the state, and the gold or the yellow, that's the global rank. So you can see 73% of our students who took the AP exam scored a three or higher, which is above the state average, and as you can see over the last two years, we, we made some nice strides and nice improvements in that area. This breaks it down a little bit more deeply, where we had, this year we had a total of 81, last year we had a total of 81 students. What we're really trying to do is increase the number of students that take AP courses. We believe that it prepares them for the rigor of college and that it really enhances their full educational experience. We're trying to get as many students by the time they're a senior to take that, to take an AP course. So we have a total number of students at 81, the total number of exams at 137, which you can see is drastically up from last year, 115 to 114. And then AP students with a score of three or higher, we have 59 with an average of 72.8. Next year, we'll have even, hopefully, more students taking the exam, as we added extra courses last, this school year, and they'll be taking that first exam in, in May. So that walks you through that a little bit. This is our SIP goal, this is actually what we have in there, is to ensure consistent implementation of effective advanced placement practices across all AP courses. AP courses is a very standardized course that is, is put out by Advanced Placement or College Board. You have, you teach it a certain way, they teach you how to do it, we send, we actually sent our teachers out to get trained. One of our action steps is to have, align the AP courses with AP standards. This past year, we really wanted to make sure comprehensively that all of our classes that are AP totally aligned to AP standards, that students are taking AP exams prepared and ready. So we had to submit course syllabus, and one thing that's very nice with an addition with Mr. Voorhees, is that we meet monthly now with our AP PLC, which is Professional Learning Community, where teachers come together and they talk about best practices inside the AP classes. The next action step is to ensure that all AP teachers have received timely AP certification, and you can see there, we sent five teachers this summer, this past summer, for AP training. It's a five-day intensive institute where they basically get certified to teach this AP course. We're hopefully sending three more teachers out because some of the courses are getting out updates, and they need to be certified in that. And then finally, we're going to be putting a schedule together to make sure that our teachers are routinely getting updates through AP and the knowledge they need to be able to teach. We need to submit a course syllabus. So it's not like you just want to like teach an AP course and you just go do it. You actually have to submit a course syllabus, the course syllabus has to be approved, and then it stays on record with College Board, who's the company of AP. So we've gone through with our syllabus written by our teacher, we have our syllabus submitted for AP review, and we are currently waiting on confirmation from AP to, to get that approved. One of the things we're trying to do is to really enhance the number of students that take an AP course. Some people might think, you know, AP courses are just for the, the top of the top, and that's not how we feel. We believe that, you know, students across this high school would benefit from getting involved in AP courses. So what we're going to do is, we're going to try to increase awareness, and we're doing that by right around that scheduling window of January, posting a parent information note. At that parent information note, we'll be talking about AP courses, as well as our dual enrollment courses. So students can learn how they can move, graduate from high school with college credits in hand, ready to go in college, and save a ton of money. We're having students actually graduate after taking these AP exams that are getting, you know, six, nine, 15 credits, so when they go off to college, they're prepared and ready to go. That means it's going to be on Thursday, January 22nd, in the library at 7:00 PM, and, you know, encourage parents from the high school to come out. Any questions, board?
Dr. Ziegler, thank you.
Yes.
I have one question. Requirements for the students to take the AP courses, is that a, a grade requirement to be carrying to move forward into an AP? What's the requirement for a student to move up into an AP course?
There are three requisites for two reasons. One is in the math, when you get to that math level, it's very math, you know, it's a high-level math. So you have to have, like, you have to have trigonometry, and in the, on the other side, like, social studies or the sciences and English, it's very intensive with writing. So we do ask that, you know, you have a certain level of writing and get a certain grade, I think it's like a B or an A in your English class.
Okay, my next question attached to that is, what happens if there's a student that really, you know, wants to take this AP course, and say he's, he or she is missing that, that threshold by just a small amount? Is there any way, is there a guidance council recommendation, is, can this person go to the guidance council, the teacher, and this person go and say, hey, look, student X is really showing the knowledge and, and desire, and the grade's just a little bit off, or that, that threshold's a little bit off? that, that threshold's a little bit off. Can we move forward? Is there a way to do that?
Yeah, that actually happens, you know, throughout, throughout the scheduling year. And the answer is yes. My goal is, I want to, I want to challenge students and I want, if student comes to me and says, hey, Dr. Z, or comes to a guidance council and says, I want the challenge of this, I might have missed it by a percentage point, but listen, I can do this, I can do this work. We're going to get them in there. We're going to monitor their progress, you know, to make sure that they're meeting their requirements and they're keeping up with their work. But absolutely, we want to be flexible to get students in like that.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
I had one little question. I noticed that the number of students taking the test is significantly higher than the number taking the course. Is that just carryover from the previous year or if there were 100 something kids taking the tests, but 81 taking the class? Did I just misunderstand what you were showing us or?
I, I can go back to that slide and so right here, you actually, we actually increased the number of students that took the exam. One of the reason is, last year we had AP Physics, we did not have that a year before, okay? No, I'm sorry, not AP Physics. AP Calc AVs, we had last year, but we did not have that the year before. But it's also from the fact, we've been really trying to market this because we want students to be taking the AP exams. Does that answer your question?
Dr. Ziegler, does that show that, that's total AP students, does that mean that some students are taking more than one?
Yes.
Okay.
Some students are taking more than one exam, yeah. And not every student who enrolls in an AP course takes the AP exam. Now I understand that, yeah.
Do you know, I thought historically we've had a problem with actually convincing the students to take the AP exams even after they've taken the class. Is that true or is that, is it a pretty high percentage of the students that actually take the exam?
We're getting much better at that. We have a lot of room to grow.
Do you know why the kids were not comfortable to take the exam?
I don't, I, not, not all parents, yeah. I can tell you this much though, we are strongly encouraging students to take the course, to take the exam. What we're doing is when we're talking to parents, you know, I'm sending letters home, teachers are sending letters home, encouraging parents to let their kids get involved. The other thing is, any student that has social economic needs, that is discounted or paid for, so that's not a hindrance to them.
Are there negative consequences if they take the exam and get less than three?
Absolutely not.
So is it a perception of negative consequences perhaps?
I don't want to speculate really. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ziegler. Under public comment, I didn't have any public comment forms, was that correct? And we'll move on to the report of the superintendent.
I recommend that you approve the professional staff items as submitted.
Move to lump all staff together.
We're going to approve all.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Then motion to second. Motion to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Got all personnel? Moving on to business, I recommend that you authorize the administration to purchase a new maintenance vehicle as presented. Oh, I missed. Yes. Is that all? Oh, I missed. I missed something, sorry. Didn't I?
No.
No, that was, so you did it.
Yeah, we did it.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion to second. Any questions? All those in favor? Aye.
I recommend that you authorize Mr. Nestor to pay bills for the month of December 2014.
Motion to second.
Any questions? All those in favor? Aye.
I recommend that you authorize the administration to enter into an agreement with Herbion and Company as presented.
Motion to second. Any questions? All those in favor? Aye.
I recommend that you approve the mentors as presented.
Second. Motion to second. Any questions? All those in favor? The only comment I did want to make, and this is kind of after the fact, but our, under Personnel 5B, I just wanted to thank our Act 93 team for amicable and swift negotiations and we just wanted to appreciate them for making that as easy as possible for us and doing what's right for the district. So thank you. Discussion items?
Under discussion items, I'm going to ask that Dr. Shirk talk with you about a time and attendance software.
Thank you, Ms. Fiola. Tonight, I'd like to take the opportunity to talk about VerTime. One of the things that I've had the opportunity to look at since I've been here almost a year now is how, how we do our timesheets and the fact we, we do them manually still in our buildings. The building secretaries collect, collect the information, the building secretaries then pass that information along to the principals, the principals then pass that information along to the district office, the district office then verifies that information and sends that to payroll. One of the things I found out in my research that the district was a VerTime pilot program in 2011 and what really has transpired over that time is basically the change in personnel and, and my position included. There was so much change in 2012 and 13 that the VerTime project really got pushed to the side and was brought to my attention by Mr. Ron Linky and Dave Nestor and the, the business department, payroll people and personnel as well as my secretary of how we could make this, this more efficient. And one of the things that has come to light for us in the district, you know, with this responsibility, comes to light is the Affordable Care Act. It's very, very important now that we, we take the time to track the hours of our employees because after a certain threshold, we are then responsible to have them be subject to benefits. So it's a fine line for us economically as well, so we want to make sure that we maintain the benefits that we have for the people that we service, but we also want to maintain, maintain going forward that we don't add an added expense, you know, to, to the district. So the, the Affordable Care Act is definitely one reason to go in this direction because it's going to chart everything that we do on an hourly basis. We also are, it's important for us to follow the Fair Labor Standards Act, which goes back, you know, back in 1930s, whenever this, this movement started at fair labor. And it's important that we continue to do due diligence as far as the Fair Labor Act as well. Also, our, our ability to improve our accountability on our hourly employees. One of the things that we have found out through the, the short year that I've been here is that we do have a tendency at times to have what we call job creep. And the people are getting 15, 20 extra minutes here or there and this would basically prevent that job creep and allow us to maintain that integrity as far as what the, what the person is, is hired to do. If it's a four and a half hour job a day, 22 and a half hours a week, then we can monitor that and that can be, also be monitored and will be monitored at, at the building level. So that's, that's important, our accountability before, and I think finally, this product will save us time and money. Once, we will set up stations throughout the district, the hourly employees will, will time in, they will time out, the building principals will have the ability to monitor that, who's in their building, who's an hourly employee in their building, and therefore the accountability factor will be much, much greater. And that's for everybody. That's our facilities, that's our maintenance, that's our aides, that's anybody who's an hourly employee. The initial cost, as I mentioned to you in the, in the minute, in the notes for the weekend, it's a 17, $17,500 initial investment that we need and it's, it's on a, a cost for setup fee as well as allowing us that one-time ability to be trained. From there on, it's a $10,000 annual fee for us to maintain that. And just doing some real quick mental math, the, the time that it saves our payroll clerk and the time that it's the HR secretary, the HR secretary that splits with technology as well as the building secretaries and the building principals that it takes, I think once we get through the initial 17.5 investment, I think it'll pay for itself at that 10,005, you know, moving forward. It's also an insurance policy for us as we monitor the Affordable Care Act moving forward. Mr. Linky is with us tonight in the audience. If you have any questions for me or for him, he's been integral in this process from the start and he'll be happy, myself will be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I always just want to say that having been in the field of HR automation for a lot of my life, that automating time and attendance is a idea that certainly we should be ready for. And we're a little behind the eight ball compared with a lot of businesses. I don't really know about school districts. So, so in general, I'm completely in favor of, of this. You answered one of my questions, which was, do you see any possibility for ROI with, with the savings in level of effort as well as more accurate time tracking? Do you have a sense as to how many employees we have that are Fair Labor Standards Act non-exempt?
Mr. Linky?
I think we have about 200, 250 employees.
Personally, I think this is a no-brainer. The only other question I have, and I don't, with Dave not being here, I'm not sure you know the answer, but did we budget for the 17.5 for this year? And do we intend to take this out of the general fund or would we be taking this out of the capital fund?
This was not budgeted for, but we would be taking it out of the general fund. This wouldn't qualify for a capital reserve fund item.
Is there anybody here to, to answer to Mr. Linky? Okay. Any other questions?
I just have one. What is the game plan in implementing it? If it gets approved, what would be the, the game plan? Like when will we start it?
Our goal would be to get approval in January from the board and then move forward from there to basically implement this spring and, and basically be able to iron the kinks out for this, end of this school year and be, you know, full board come July 1st with our employees.
Is there any reason we can't make a motion tonight?
I just wanted to make sure that you had opportunity to think about it, digest it, and that's why we set it up the way we did.
Well, we got that packet a whole week early, so I had plenty of time to think about it. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the time and attendance software.
Second, second to motion.
I just had one quick question before we-
Now, we have a motion to second. You can ask, ask the question.
I can ask my question. And sadly, Dave's not here tonight. So, but maybe somebody else knows about this. Usually there's, because I know you said this is not currently part of the budget, usually there's a little bit of wiggle room in the budget. Dave, I think, plans an extra percentage, couple percentages, like 5% contingency, I think, on the budget.
We also got the PlanCon money, I think.
Yeah. Hopefully that's coming down the pipe.
That should cover the 17.5 and then some.
Oh, that did come in. All right. So, so good. That's, and that's, this is something definitely. I personally was shocked when I read this, that we were still doing this on paper, you know, when all of our middle school kids have an iPad and, and we're still, you know, our building principals are still doing this on paper. I was kind of shocked about that. So I'm totally on board with this, especially since we have the PlanCon money. This will be absolutely budget neutral. Like Rick said, it seems like a no-brainer.
Any other?
I just had two questions. The first one was going to be, have we looked at any other software that might be less or just to compare? And then if you could describe what the annual cost is?
No, no, we did not. We went with the VerTime program because it coincides, the software coincides with our AESOP substituting program. So they're, 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 they're married together. So they, they've, they've been together. In fact, that's, you know, we were, we were chosen as a pilot in 11, oh, 11, to do it. We just choo, we chose at that time not, not to move forward. So those two are married, that's why we decided to go with that. If we went with anything else, we were liable to have to change that system as well. Upfront, it's a, it's a first year fee of 17.5 and then 10.5 annually after that. So it's a cost of 10,005. And it would be prorated for this year, so it wouldn't be the whole 17.5 for this year.
And again, you felt that the 10.5 will pay for itself. So the, really the only cost here is the initial setup. I mean, you're predicting, I mean, I think we should look at it next year before we renew to see if we're getting the savings that we expect, but given that fact, again, I think it's a no-brainer.
Is it, once we enter into an agreement, is it a multi-year agreement? Are we tied into this or?
No, it's not a multi-year agreement. We get an exam within 30 to 60 days.
Okay. So we can decide year, year over year. Okay.
Actually, there's one more thing. I was happy, I mean, if, obviously tonight, if, if it does move forward, that'll be great because we did, we did have a discount set up if we moved in December, but we also told the VerTime Corporation that if we, if we, if you could wait with us till January, and they were graciously enough to go on, you know, they were going to extend that, that discount as well into January. So I think it's a good start for us. I think it's a fair, a fair price and then we can judge moving forward the, the results of the program.
We have a motion to second. We asked all our questions. All those in favor?
Just an aye comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. This wasn't on the agenda, so we have to open up for public comment. Is there any public comment? No? Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Post.
Hey, Justin, before we go on, can we just make one correction, I guess, for the minutes for next time? When we approved our last item, our education item, it was not to approve mentors as presented. I think it was to approve conferences.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
So just so the minutes reflect that next time.
Yeah.
Moving on to our second discussion item, I'm passing out to you a series of documents. I wanted to speak with you about our, our regular board meeting and committee meeting schedules. After having followed a certain procedure for a year, I thought it would be a good idea for the board to have some dialogue as to how well or how efficient our current system is. And the reason this kind of came to my attention is the superintendents were sharing across the county with regard to the various ways in which they conduct their business, both their regular meetings and their committee meetings. And there were just a myriad of different ways in which those, those meetings are held and, and I, I got to thinking about whether or not we felt that our system was the most efficient and effective for our purposes. So I thought I would at least bring to your attention an alternate idea that's being used in some districts. And just to give you a little bit of history, historically, Potts Grove did have a system such as this years ago and somehow it evolved into two board meetings a month. But what I'm proposing is something a little bit different. And just to give you some context, the, the current board meeting schedule is the first copy that you have and the second copy is the current committee meetings. And you can see that as board members, you're out quite a few evenings per month trying to attend many different committees. And one of the things that other districts are doing is trying to condense their business items into one of the meetings per month and then holding the second meet month or the second meeting per the month to kick, cover all of their committee business. And I know for, for you, you've kind of spread yourselves thin, whereas you've only had three board members that were tied to one particular committee. And sometimes we'd have committee meetings running simultaneously and you'd have to make a choice as to what committee you wanted to attend. And thus, when we had anything of, you know, something that, that was of interest to more board meetings than we're, or board members than were at the, the original committee meeting, we were repeating the business at the regular board meeting so that all board members could understand the topic or get more information prior to holding a vote. So that being said, another idea for your consideration, there are two documents. One would show you a monthly meeting agenda if we were to have all of the business in one meeting. And you can see that it has a call to order. I added a section called recognition and awards because I think sometimes we forget that we want to make some recognitions. For instance, this evening with the cross-country team, and that should be listed there. And that was just something that I saw as I was looking through other board meeting agendas from around the county. listed as, you know, to remind ourselves that we should make those announcements. So I added that. And then you can see underneath that, we would do all of the approval of the minutes. So the general session minutes would be approved, just like we're doing now. And then right underneath of that, we would approve any of the other minutes that we had from prior committee meetings. Then we brought in the receiving of the accounts for audit, so all of the business items, the granting of the orders, the treasurer's report, then public comment, and then the report of the superintendent as we have now with the action items and the discussion items, the board student representative report, new business, answers to previous inquiries, and then adjournment. And that would be the second meeting of the month that would be held at district office, and that would be after you've had all of your committee discussion. So basically, the business meeting would be at the district office. What we would do then, if you like this proposal, would be to hold the committee meetings out in the buildings like this, this evening. And on the second paper, I sketched out what that might look like. And knowing that we have certain committees that need to meet at certain times of the year, for instance, the finance is becoming something that we'll be starting with next month, and it's going to need to take some time, I kind of scattered the committees throughout the course of the calendar. And you can see that policy basically meets every month, you know, except we skipped a meeting to insert athletics and co-curricular. We could probably add another one in there. I just didn't know where to put it, and this year, we seem to only have one so far. The finance meetings, you can see in January, February, March, April, May. They're quite lengthy and longer period of time, and that would be board of the whole anyway because typically, we do those at the, one of the regular board meetings. But in this case, we would just have all of our finance presentation and conversation at that particular time. I slated the operations in there for half an hour almost every meeting, and we can do our high school renovation update and then other operations issues. I know we have our food service budget that comes up. That would be an operations issue. Mr. Katzenmoyer has other capital projects and other things happening that typically we talk about in the committee, and then we have to come back and talk about again as a full board anyway. So we're kind of doing double the amount of discussion over the same topic. And then I went on to add the curriculum and academic affairs, and I tried to scatter that throughout so that it would be more timely. And certainly, something like what was presented this evening would be something that we would present in academic affairs, what we're doing with our AP courses, our grading issue we've talked about, some of our course enrollments, our new courses that we're projecting or asking for approval. And all of those things would be done during that slated time for curriculum and academic affairs, which actually, I added additional time from what we currently have on our committee calendar because right now, we only have four meetings, and they're slated for an hour and a half. And this proposal has probably more opportunities for us to talk about curriculum and academic affairs, but scattered throughout the course of the year. So this was just something that I was laying out for your consideration and conversation. I mean, as I said, districts are doing this many, many different ways. We just have to find the way that's most efficient and effective for you. And I certainly, first and foremost, want to make the best use of your time because I see how hard you work each and every month and how many hours that you're putting in. And I want to make sure that, you know, that you're getting the most out of this and that we're doing the best job that we can to make an efficient, but also an informative meeting and being able to get the information out to the public. So that's just opening it up for conversation.
I just want to preface, I would like to hear just everybody's input on this topic.
I was just going to say, the one thing that I like about this is I think a lot of times, we talk about things in the tiny details in a policy meeting, and not very many people from the public have a chance to come to these meetings or watch these televised meetings and then also come to a committee meeting. And it would be, for me, it seems like it would kind of be a more transparent process where things that are discussed in the committee meetings will be more open to the public. And so then we could get more public input and comment. And sometimes, I think when things come out in these meetings that was discussed in small detail in policy, sometimes a vote is taken, and then there's some misunderstanding as to how we arrived at that. Whereas if we do it in these two meetings, it will be all televised, it'll be all recorded. If someone has a question, they can go back and look at it and see in minute detail how we arrived at the decisions that we're arriving at.
Well, I'll go next. Actually, I do really like this idea a lot. For one reason, it's hard for all of us is to go to the other committees' meetings, and that way, we're all more in tune instead of hearing it or reading the minutes. I think it's an excellent idea, and then it's really organizing our time better. So I think it's a great idea.
I do think this is a, this is a good concept to allow more people to be involved in these committee processes. I would want us to make sure that we allow enough time. I know specifically for the policy committee, we have an hour slotted, and we do meet every month, so this takes it back to a half hour. And then at the same time, they're always public, right? Everybody knows that, and we always welcome the public to come. But with all, with the entire board, it essentially becomes a committee of the board, a committee of the whole board, because everybody's there. They're going to ask questions, they're going to interact, and we would hope they would. But that, that'll make it, that could make it take longer. I would expect it would make it take longer. And I know we have it through nine. I'll put a big target on my head and say, I don't ever mind staying later than nine. But just hopefully, we can be flexible if we go to something like this in the schedule so that we can make sure we get everything accomplished. I know just from the policy committee, we're full pretty much every month, and it usually takes us the hour, and it's a good productive hour. But if we add the six other board members, which is, which is fine, we just have to make sure we allot for time for six other board members, public comment, and other interactions. That's, that's my concern. Other than that, I think it's a decent idea.
I concur with everything that Matt said. That's one of my concerns. I certainly don't mind staying late and never have. But, you know, academic affairs was a, was a every couple of month meeting and was typically an hour and a half, and now we've cut that way back as well. So if we're increasing the frequency, maybe that doesn't matter. But, but that's, that's a concern A. And then concern B, I just wonder if the timing of this change, because I assume you would want this to go into effect January or thereabouts, coinciding with, with change orders from the high school project. I mean, the principle here is that we're non-voting meetings when we're doing the work sessions. And, you know, when you guys need a change order approved on the high school project, then we needed to get it approved. So I'm afraid we're going to have a lot of votes anyway during these meetings, since we're all going to be there, sort of defeating the purpose of separating it to work session versus, versus board meetings. So that's a concern of mine. And then last, and this is just a question for clarification, wouldn't the work sessions be at the district office and the board meetings be at the schools? Because I thought I heard you say the opposite, Shelley.
Well, a couple of things. We were thinking about both of those items, and one, we thought about putting action items if necessary. Most of the other agendas that I looked at in other board, in other districts, they did, they always do action items if they have to. So something that's timely, like a change order, we might have to do an action item right at the very end. That was one comment. The times, I was just sketching them out, not thinking that you'd have to hold fast to 30 minutes here and 45 minutes there, but just kind of laying out guidelines. And then we went back and forth whether we should have the work session at the district office or not, but we thought that this was more of a, originally, when we talked about these committees, you wanted more of a transparent, interactive, having committee, having community be able to see and hear what was going on. And sometimes in the business meetings, it's boom, 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 motion, you know, vote, and a community member who's not at all the committee meetings wouldn't understand it anyway. But it, but the, actually, what's discussed in the committee meetings would be what's important to them, because then they would understand why you're voting on something in a business meeting. So that's why we thought it might be more appropriate to have the committee meetings out in the buildings where we would have, you know, principals present, sometimes making presentations, and more community present.
I have one last thing. And by, coincidentally, this is, this came up at the MCIU with the change in leadership there, and Dr. George wants to do essentially the same thing and have a start early, have a start earlier. But since the meetings are monthly, it's concatenating into a single night rather than every other night. So we have the work session starting at 6:30. We squeeze an exec session somewhere, I don't know where, and then, and then we have the standard board meeting. The concern I expressed there, I think, is relevant to us. If the, the best justification for this, based on what I heard you say and from my own thoughts, are we're going to essentially have discussion focused, a lot more discussion in the work sessions. And the board meetings then become, for lack of a better word, mainly voting meetings. That doesn't mean there wouldn't be discussion, but we wouldn't have as many presentations. My comment at MCIU was if we're going to have these start earlier and do these work sessions and then have long presentations from the administration where they read the slides, then I choose to vote no. You know, if, if we're going to do the presentations during the work sessions, then I would like the board meetings to be much more efficient. I'm willing to give the time in either case. That's not the issue. It's just, otherwise, we don't really get the benefit. Am I making myself clear?
And you can see on the draft monthly agenda that I did put out, there's no education report on here now, so we kind of took that off. We cut to the business, and we, all of the business is listed, and we married the two agendas into one.
And if we do this now, we could always revisit this anytime, correct?
As Shelley indicated, they'll all be advertised as public meetings, so you could change anytime. And again, it may not be my place, but just the benefit of having gone to a couple meetings in my career, the issue you raised is a fair one about actions starting to creep into both meetings. And to a certain extent, that's a matter, what I've seen of your own discipline. I mean, I've worked, as Shelley said aptly, there's a myriad of models. I mean, that's a good word. But having said that, I've seen many boards work where they work session, or what they call sometimes an agenda-setting meeting. Sometimes they do it back-to-back weeks. And I will tell you, through many building projects, really, in the end, if you discipline yourselves, you don't have to act at the work session, except in a infrequent, rare occasion. You probably, if you really want to make this work, should discipline yourself to make sure the meeting's accomplished the purpose you want, which is one being the work session and one being the action meeting. I mean, yeah, I mean, some of these action meetings get done now in 40 minutes or less, and you can model your agenda, have consent parts, and I can talk to you about that. But that's a matter of disciplining yourself.
I'd just like to circle back around to, I think, something that-
Can you hold on, just let everyone talk first before we go on to the, and then we'll go round two? Okay. Go ahead, John, you look like you have your-
I think it's a great idea, and I think it'll take some ti, you know, a little fine tuning, and I think we can figure it out as we go along. I just harken back to a couple months ago, a parent stood out here and made a comment. And sometimes people don't think we, we listen to what they say. And this is a perfect example that we do, was stated that we have too many meetings. It infringes on their ability to see maybe an event their kid has. They have to make a choice of school board meeting or go to another meeting, like the finance committee meeting or whatever they want to really go to. So doing this, I think, is going to open up more time for not just us, but, but the parents who have to make those decisions, and they really want to go to a committee meeting or our meeting. And so the less calendar time we're filling with this will open up, I think, the calendar time for the parents to adjust their time and be able to, you know, do what they need to do. And I think it sticks in my head that it was a question that somebody brought up at a meeting, and we're, it's part of what we're doing here, and I think it's going to be a great idea for everybody. Thank you.
I think it's worth a try. I think it's kind of nice that then we would all be able to kind of interact a little bit more with each other and get a sense of what the other committees are doing. Because I know, sometimes I kind of feel left out in the dark a little bit. So I think it's worth a try.
Justin, I'll comment as well. I also feel it's a, I think, a good change that may help with informing everyone about what goes on with all the committees. I know especially with the facility committees, that's one where we spend a lot of money, but there's only three people that hear a lot of the details and don't know all the other work that Mike and his group may do to take care of everything here. So I think it's a good idea. At least try it.
I'll just echo what, what Dave said, that I've, I've felt funny for the public a lot of times when we've made a presentation to spend money, like the truck that we just bought. It's like, you know, without explaining some of the details, you know, and the reasoning behind how the decision was made. And so I think it's going to be better for the public as well as for us. So that's my feeling.
I want to, I want to, and I missed the meeting, so.
Okay. So, so you re-echo my echo then, okay? Thank you.
Yeah. I think it's a positive change, and I really would like to encourage just more dialogue. And I think we've kind of gelled in that fashion over the last year in the committee meetings, especially, we've got a lot of discussion at the policy meetings, and actually worked really well with Matt and Rick. It's kind of fun, Dr. Schur, you know, but we want to keep the excitement into the, into the work session as well and have some really good discussion and dialogue about things that are happening in the district. So I think it's a positive change, definitely worth a try. And everyone here is very dedicated and puts in a lot of hours, so if we can make better use of our time, so we have more time with our families, I think it's a, it's a positive thing to try.
The, the action meetings, the second meeting of the month, would that also be 6:30 or?
I thought that could stay at 7:30, but that's up to you. I think you can still get it in.
Does anyone think that this should be 7:00 instead of 6:30?
I think 7:00 might be easier for people with a work schedule, but-
6:30 can be a challenge for me. In my current schedule, it might change soon, so, you know.
We can, we work on the time. Yeah. I think push it back just a little bit to give us time to get here.
Just circling back to one of Matt's concerns was getting through all the things that are on the agenda. And I think looking at this, it might, we might have to kind of slow things down a little bit. Maybe we won't get as much done as, you know, get things done as quickly as we have been. But I think it's a good trade-off for the transparency. When we do things quite quickly and the public doesn't understand what's going on, it seems like it's being shoved through or shoved down their throats or, or something like that. I would rather take the time and let people see what we're talking about, have time to digest it, you know, maybe come back with a public comment. I think this would be great to kind of encourage more public comment, and, you know, we could get, we've been trying to get more feedback, more community involvement, and I think maybe it would be a good thing to slow things down sometimes if we can have everybody's input and, you know, get, so that all the stakeholders understand.
The only thing you need is a motion to advertise your meeting schedule as presented by Shelley. And then you don't need a formal vote. I think the administration understands you want to now make some of these adjustments that we've talked about between the two advertised meetings, one being more driven as a committee of the whole or a work session. of the whole or a work session, and one being more, for lack of a better word, an action meeting or business meeting.
Justin, can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Gus, does this impact you at all? No. Okay. Just want to make sure.
I just had a logistical question. I know we were talking about having the, I don't know what you would call this, the discussion meetings with the policy committees out at the schools, and then having the work meeting at the district office. Does anybody have, I mean, I know traveling time, and, you know, if you've got to go across town or anything like that, is that, is it a logistical problem for anybody? I just kind of want to get all the logistical issues out of the way before we decide on one.
I think it would be easier logistically to have the 6:30 meeting at the district. Oh, no, that's not. The 6:30 meeting is going to be at the schools.
You can do however you want.
But logistically, it would be probably easier to have it at the district office. But you just made me think of another question, which is, we usually have, when we go to like the elementary schools, we have student participation, you know, fun things. So when would the fun, those fun student things happen? Would they happen at the committee meeting, or would they happen at the voting meeting?
I guess it depends on what it is. But I put at the, on the meeting, the business meeting, I put recognition and awards. So sometimes, we would invite students to come. Like this evening, we would have invited the cross-country team to the business meeting. And we have done that before, yeah. It depends on what you'd like. I mean, I can do it either, either way, it's up to you.
I personally think, like you said, Rick, that if we were going to have something fun, if it's going to be during, you know, whichever meeting it's going to be at, if we're going to have like Ringing Rocks, you know, get up and tell us about the Buddy Bench, that we should have that at their school. You know, this is our home school. We're hosting it. We're showing you our school and the things that we do. So however we arrange it, I think that that should be the one where we travel to their site and see their special things. And, you know, I don't know, I just, I agree with you on that one.
And those things can be played by ear based off how, you know, if we know something's coming up, it can just be advertised that way that is going to be happening at that building.
I just think we should just flip back to what you, we originally talked about, which was, which is to have the district office being the committee meetings and the schools being the board meetings. And then, we're still going into everybody, each school, and if there's going to be something about Rocks, we'll be at Rocks. And if there's going to be something with the high school, we'll be at the high school. Just seems to me a more efficient thing, not to mention with the 6:30 start, the district office is a more central location, I think, for most of us. I don't know about all of us, so...
But I would, I would, I did take the education report off, so there won't be any full-blown, long presentation. So if we were, let's say, at Rocks for the monthly meeting agenda, it might be a quick recognition of some students that were student of the month that month. We probably wouldn't be doing a big presentation because we're trying to make it a business meeting. See what I'm trying, that's the difference. That's the trade-off.
Now, when the middle school kids want to perform for us, when are they going to do that? And all the parents come...
Their concert.
And all the parents come, and it fills up the room until they leave. I mean, I'm just trying to think logistically about how this would work. Maybe we stop doing that. But that's kind of one of the things I really like about being on the board.
Well, I think that's a, I mean, we don't want to lose that type of, the tradition, you know. If you flipped it back around, I think we still have this recognition and awards that we're doing in the buildings.
If you put this in the building.
Right. Like what Rick is, I agree with what Rick's saying, have it in the building, and we have, you know, we can have those special things that the kids do for us and keep those things on the agenda. So.
I agree. Have those at the schools.
And then, if that turns into our short 40-minute meeting, you know, hallelujah, if that actually happens, then we have a, we have some nice time for our Buddy Bench, and then 40 minutes, and then we're out.
So that's going to be a 7:30 meeting, business meeting. And the other meeting you want to have start at six, or, I mean, 6:30 or 7?
Right.
At 6:30 at the district office for the second meeting? So leave it where I had it, but put it back at the district office. Okay.
Okay. That's great.
So the business meeting, I'm sorry, I just want to clarify. The business meeting will continue to be the first meeting of the month in the buildings.
My motion that we advertise the meetings as discussed. All those in favor? Aye.
And I think we just, committee reports, we just need to accept the minutes for operation.
Yeah, I asked that you accept the minutes from the November 11th meeting as presented in your board packet.
Motion is second. Any questions? All those in favor? Aye. Okay. Any new business?
I just wanted to point out once again that, starting tomorrow night, we have the holiday concerts starting. We actually have the middle school and the high school orchestra practicing down in the auditorium this evening. And they will have their concert in the high school auditorium. Originally, it was in the middle school, so that's been changed. So that's going to be in the high school auditorium tomorrow night. And that begins our series of concerts all the way up, and including a Saturday concert this year. On the 20th, the high school choir is going to be singing here at the high school. And that is a fabulous, it's a free concert, obviously. It's a fabulous concert. The alumni come back and sing with them, and it's a beautiful concert, and it's a great one to bring families to. So that's the 20th, 7:30 PM here in the high school in the auditorium. But there's a lot of them, I'm not going to pick favorites, but there's a lot of them all through the season. But I did want to highlight the Saturday one, because sometimes, that's more accessible to people who are busy.
Great. Thank you, Dee. Any other new business?
I just wanted to ask, since we're moving into this new format, that we add to the appropriate agenda, and I'm not really sure what the appropriate agenda is, a discussion about the increasing number of students going into cyber charter and how we can address that trend. I'm not asking you to comment on that right this moment.
No, it's funny, though, because I was asking Ron to put a report together, and we've been working together to get a report together because I wanted to take it back to the cabinet and have that conversation. So I'm kind of working on it, so I will absolutely add it to an agenda.
Any other new business? No? Well, I want to wish everyone a happy and safe holiday season, wonderful new year. We'll be back next year, back at it. So with that, we'll make a motion to adjourn. Second. All those in favor? Aye.